It's been out during the war so we get flooding sometimes.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. This, the Monday, September 16th, 2019, meeting of the NAGC headboard of commissioners is called to order. If you will, please join me first in a few moments of silence and as we do that, since we last met, Hurricane Dorian came through and did significant damage to our neighbors to the south, so I ask that we all keep them in our minds, and I know many of you are already reaching out to help. Now, as you are able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are recognitions, and I'll turn this over to Cliff.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. First off this morning, we have Deputy Chief, Deputy Fire Chief Shane Hite to come forward and recognize a new employee in the fire department.
Morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My pleasure this morning to introduce to you our newest firefighter, Brandon Stallings. Brandon Stallings is not quite a local, but he's close. He's originally from Edenton, North Carolina. Graduated high school there at the John A. Holmes High School. Then, as he continued his education, he went to Appalachian State University. After he graduated from Appalachian State University, he had decided he wanted to become a firefighter in that. So, he went to work for the Fosco Fire Department in Banner Elk, North Carolina, where he worked there several years before being hired by the city of Winston-Salem. Brandon certified as a firefighter two, EMT, fire officer one, fire instructor one. He's a certified emergency vehicle driver and has his technical rescuer certifications. Brandon stayed at Winston-Salem four years, but decided he wanted to come back out this way. Of course, his family's still in Edenton. Right now, he's in a transition of moving from Edenton to NAGC, so he'll be, he will be a resident of the town very soon. His dad's also a firefighter in the town of Edenton, so it runs in his blood, runs in his family, of course. His wife, of course, is a physical therapist. Her name is Elena, and she couldn't be with us today. And she also got a job about the same time at Outer Banks Physical Therapy, so they're both very good times finding employment in the local area and, of course, finding a place to live here locally, so we're pretty happy about that. And Brandon, we're certainly happy to have you, and we look forward to Brandon being with us many years, so thank you.
Next, we'll have the Public Works Director, Ralph Burrell, to introduce two new employees.
Morning, Mayor, Commissioners. This morning, I'd like to first introduce John McDowell. John comes to the Outer Banks by way of Frederickburg, Maryland. John lives in Powell's Point with his wife Dawn. John has two children, Casey, who is in nursing school right now, and he has his son Eric, who is in College of Florida. John is just two, a newly grandfather, has a granddaughter who is two weeks old. John enjoys hunting, fishing, and he loves to be around the youth and umpire baseball, which we have a very big need for that in this area right now. So, without any further ado, John.
You have the Ms. Rivers, right? Good luck to Ms. Rivers, right?
The next person I'd like to introduce is Ryan Foley. Ryan was born and raised in Virginia. His family moved to Manio, and John finally bit the bullet and he decided he was going to come and move too. John, he's in facilities maintenance and has a lot of experience in plumbing. He worked as a plumber up there and came here, and now we're glad to have him in facilities maintenance because with us continuing to adding bathhouses, we need plumbers. John, he loves sports and he loves being at the beach. John, thanks for being here.
The Public Works Director will state a recognized facility maintenance superintendent, Mike Norris, on his five-year anniversary with the town.
It's my pleasure this morning to introduce Mike on his five-year anniversary. When Mike first started, he kind of got thrown right into the fire pretty quickly. Mike had worked in the private sector and did a lot in solid waste. Came to work for the town kind of right off the bat. He got hit with cleaning up after Hurricane Irene, so that was his baptism by fire. Since then, Mike has gone, got his certification for Rhodes Scholar through ITR, has done all, got all his FEMA training that he needs. Some of the other things Mike has introduced is, he's come in and he's also was hit with stormwater right off the bat. Mike has worked with David. They have put in a maintenance plan for stormwater. He's also redid the maintenance plan for all the buildings that we have. Kind of right on top of that, too, with getting hit with all of that, we also said, "Here you go, Mike, here's Doughty Park, take care of that." So, he's been, he's been pretty busy here for the last five years, and I hope that he'll be here many more years. Thanks.
We appreciate your loss. Thank you. Good job, Mike. Mayor, I'd ask our deputy town manager, Andy Garman, to come up on the occasion of his fifth year anniver, his second occasion of his fifth year anniversary with the town in Agshead. It's truly a blessing for me that Andy's here and an honor that I get to stand here with him, to recognize him, and hopefully thank him and just show some appreciation from how much he's done for the town. You all know Andy, he's well-known in the community, but I'll just share that he has a Masters of Urban and Regional Planning from Virginia Tech. Before that, he got a Bachelor of Science in Geography from Radford. He's a member of the, well, he's certified American Institute of Certified Planners. He has his Certified Zoning Official Certification. He started out in the private business and worked right out of college doing municipal planning, transportation planning, land use planning for a couple of private planning companies, but from there, he came to the town in Agshead in 2002 as our planner and stayed in 2007 until the town of Duck saw what a valuable asset he is and stole him away from us. In 2000, and he stayed until 2014 until I begged him to come to work for the town in Agshead, and Chris Leighton has not spoken to me in five years, who's the manager of Duck. But I'm very glad that Andy's here. He's from Great Bridge, like so many of us that came here during college and worked. Can't tell you about any of his college work stories when he was here. Ask him later. But he's got, he's been married, I think, about 20 years now, or right at 20 years, to his wife Amy. He's got a son that's Will, I think in the, he's a junior at Manio High School. His, I think he just turned 16, so the car that Andy drives, his son will now drive, so just be aware of that, and his daughter Grace in the eighth grade at Manio Middle School. Andy's had his hands in so many things when he's been here with the town in Agshead. He's played a huge part in beach nourishment, the website development, obviously the focus comprehensive plan, the UDO, Doughty Park planning. He's been a part of the stormwater planning, the sustainability and coastal resiliency and the VCAPs. He heads up the Public Works Department, oversees Public Works, oversees Administrative Services, and oversees the Planning Department, and there's not enough I can say about how much I appreciate Andy. You know, it feels like, like Mike, it feels like he's been here a lot more than five years because he's been so involved. So, I just want to say thank you and appreciate all you do. Congratulations. Good job, Andy. Next, we'll have our Finance Officer, Amy Miller, come forward and present the Tax Collector, Linda Bittner, with her five years of service.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Linda Bittner. She's our tax collector. She's also in charge of business license collection, beach driving permits, updating the map. Linda is dedicated to her job. She takes complete pride in it, complete ownership in it, and she's completely dependable. She is always consistent and good, and sometimes you take that for granted, that somebody just always is a high performer, always does an amazing job. You just forget to say thank you, and so, thank you, Linda, and congratulations on your five years. Linda has saw through tax and business license conversion over, it's been at least a year and a half now, but I think we have a better software, a better online experience for our customers. You can now see our bills, your bills online, including your business license when you pay them online. And I also want to take a minute to brag on Linda a little bit. So, one day Cliff had asked me to do some research. He asked me to look at this memo. It's memo 2019-12 from the LGC. It's called Management of Cash and Taxes and Fund Balance Available, and basically it's a comparison of municipalities within the state. It's about 31 pages, and it lists everybody's cash, fund balance, and tax collection rate. So, I did some comparison per his request, and the last one available was fiscal year 1718. So, statewide, the tax collection rate for all municipalities is 99.17 percent, and all municipalities our size that we can be compared to is 98.47 percent. Our tax collection rate was 99.99 percent. And when I looked through all those 31 pages, I found one place that was 100 percent, and that was Flat Rock. However, their assessed value was 1.5 billion less than ours, so I'm going to hang my hat on the fact that we probably have the highest effective tax collection rate in the state. And since Linda has been here since 2014, that would be fiscal year 15. Let me just give you a history of our tax collection rate. So, that wasn't only one year that it was that high. 2015, 99.91 percent. 2016, 99.99 percent. 2017, 100 percent. And out of $6,940,569, she did not collect $196. 2018, 99.99 percent, and she must have been slacking off in 2019 because it was 99.98 percent. But we'll chalk, we'll chalk that up to the conversion that we've been going through. So, anyways, Linda, I just wanted everybody to know that, you know, we should be really thankful and proud to have her working for us and, like I said, completely dedicated and, you know, we take it for granted again that it's always an expectation to have such a high tax collection rate, something to be very proud of, but there's a lot of hard work, and I want everybody just to appreciate how hardworking she is and say thank you. So, thank you very much.
Haven't quite figured out how I'm going to explain to the board when she collects over 100 percent of our taxes. Next, we'll bring Deputy Chief Shane Hite back to recognize some departments with the Department of Labor and Safety Awards.
Thank you once again. If I could, I would like to have, there are some members of the Safety Committee here. I'd like to have them to come up and be acknowledged as well, please, so if you all would. So, our Safety Committee has representation from each department in the town. These members meet once a month to go over some different things, go over different training that we, we can promote within the town, to go over any incidents that have happened, to try to look for new and better ideas and ways of doing things that can hopefully keep us safer and keep our employees safer. With that said, today, we are recognizing several departments who have achieved a five-year safety award, consecutive five years, from the North Carolina Department of Labor. So, I would like to read a section from the North Carolina Department of Labor's website that explains a little bit about this award, and then we'll, of course, present those. So, before I do that, we have representation from the police, Greg Southier, fire Jackie Hart, Ray Shunemaker from Water, and of course, Free Floyd from Admin Services. I guess the rest could not be here this morning. The North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards Program is administered through its Education, Training, and Technical Assistance Bureau of the Occupational Safety and Health Division. Through the Safety Awards Program, private and public firms that achieve and maintain good safety reports are recognized. This program is designed to stimulate interest in accident prevention and to promote safety in the workplace by providing an incentive to employers and employees to maintain a safe and healthful workplace. To qualify for an annual safety award, a firm must have no fatalities during the calendar year at the site or location for which the award was given and have maintained an incidence rate at least 50 percent below the average for its particular history group. Again, the departments that we recognize in a day have five consecutive years in this. So, if we could, and I'm hoping that there's enough representation here to come up, but if not, some might have to do double duty. So, if you would, it might be one of you all to come up, and the mayor has some awards for us. The first is Public Works Maintenance Garage. So, Ralph, can you get that one? Public Works Administration as well.
Public Works Administration.
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you, all right, there's one.
We have Septic Health. And Public Works Water Administration. So, again, thank you. A lot of hard work goes into the safety program, and everyone meets, and I think we put a lot of effort forth to hopefully keep our employees safe, so congratulations to all the departments, and thank you.
Great. Mr. Mayor, Foley, the Outer Banks Rodden Custom Festival had asked to recognize our Police Department. I don't see Michael Tillit, but it's Sarah Hoyle here. May have been a confusion with the change of date, so we'll check back with him.
Okay, great. In that case, the next item on our agenda would be public comment, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at this time. The Board of Commissioners will receive comments from the members of the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address concerns or comments to the board as a whole. It's not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely, if ever, responds to public comment. But anybody who wishes to provide comment, if you will, please approach the podium, start off by telling us who you are and where you live, and then address your comments to the board as a whole. We also have a five-minute time limit, and I will be keeping that time limit myself, and I'll let you know when your time is up. So, who's first for public comment? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Gurley, and I live at 3322 South Buccaneer Drive, Northridge Estates in Agshead. I'm here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to vote no on the proposed amendment regarding accessory dwelling units in private residential neighborhoods. I've submitted to the board my reasons for opposing this amendment, so...
I'm sorry, ma'am. I hate to interrupt you.
Uh-huh.
I want, I should have mentioned this earlier. You will have an opportunity to provide comment on that specific issue during the public hearing.
Okay.
When the board is considering that text amendment.
Okay.
So, if you want to hold your comment till that time, that would probably be more...
That would be great.
More powerful.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am. I promise I won't cut anybody else off if they, they want to provide comment. Anybody else at all? All right, with no other comment, we will close the public comment period at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda then would be the consent agenda. You see the items there that are listed, and a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda are, items are three public hearings for accessory dwelling units, deck platforms, and public comment for public beach and coastal waterfront access areas. And so, I'll turn this back over to Mr. Leidy for the first public hearing.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the text amendments that are related to the, to accessory dwelling units. On this matter, the board sits as a legislative body, and that means that the board does not need to receive any sworn testimony or other competent evidence. This is a matter where members of the public are allowed to comment and do not have to be sworn. So, we'll begin with the public hearing with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Planning Director, Michael Zener.
Thank you. Good morning. We're returning to you with an updated memo. We previously presented that memo at the July 3rd board meeting. We updated that memo dated August 28th, reflecting the Planning Board's recommendation, which was unanimous recommendation of an ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units. And as was presented to the Planning Board as well as to the Board of Commissioners previously, the ordinance now reflects an amendment of the Unified Development Ordinance with the adoption of that since it was last reviewed. And I'll walk you through the proposed ordinance, and I'm happy to address any questions that the board may have about any discussion points in the memo. So, we have a proposed definition for accessory dwelling. Generally, it's going to be a dwelling that is intended for occupancy of 30 days or greater. The next part, Part Two, would amend the table of permitted uses, and I'll go through that because that's important to discuss where and what zoning districts is allowed by right, as well as with a conditional use permit. The next part are the supplemental regulations in terms of what additional standards accessory dwellings must comply with. No more than one accessory dwelling shall be permitted on a single residential lot. 7.3.2 covers the maximum square footage allowed, whichever is less, 50 percent of the size of the principal dwelling or 600 square feet. I think the board is aware that was something that certainly the Board of Commissioners discussed, but also the Planning Board. And for a period, it was discussed whether this number should be 800, and I think the Planning Board and members of the Board of Commissioners also gave guidance that 600 was appropriate. 7.3.3 ensures that accessory dwellings are captured in the calculation to determine what a large residential dwelling is. 7.3.4 limits the maximum height, story height, for an accessory structure that contains an accessory dwelling to one and a half stories. The intent there is to ensure that the accessory structure is less, is smaller than in size, but also in height than the principal dwelling. 7.3.5, and this is a point where Commissioner Fuller had raised at the previous meeting, we had the term stick built contained here, and that is not a defined term, so we did consult with the building, with the chief building official for the town and clarified that a little bit, that accessory dwellings may only be located in structures built in accordance with the North Carolina Residential Building Code, and then the use of manufactured mobile homes, travel trailers, motorhomes and the like would not be able to be used as accessory dwelling units. The next provision deals with the setback limit. Normally, an accessory structure would be allowed a five-foot setback. If it contains an accessory dwelling, that setback would increase to 10 feet, except that if that accessory structure was located, a portion of which or the entirety forward of the midpoint of the principal structure, it would need to meet the principal structure The next piece, 7.3.7, deals with parking. The intent here is that the accessory dwelling unit be required to have one additional parking spot beyond what normally would be required for the dwelling, and we've written this in a way to ensure that the bedroom units, or the bedrooms, rather, in the accessory dwelling unit would count as part of the dwelling for the purpose of determining the number of parking spaces. Next part would ensure that they be limited to a single electric and water meter connection. 7.3.9 ensuring, and this is probably built in suspenders, but ensuring that they have appropriate septic system approved by Dare County. And then 7.3.10 adds additional findings in those cases where a conditional use permit is required. We've added additional findings beyond what normally are required for conditional use permits. So, and then a final piece, and this is something that we discussed with the Planning Board and the board. The Planning Board was supportive of allowing ADUs on any lot. We discussed with them whether or not they should be limited to only conforming lots, and the board was not in favor of that. So, we are suggesting, and this is a clarification of another section of the UDO, of the zoning ordinance, to clarify that both accessory buildings and structures, but also accessory uses as may be allowed, are allowed on a non-conforming lot. So, the table I was referring to earlier, this spells out in what districts ADUs would be allowed by conditional permit, conditional use permit, and where they would be allowed by right. So, the PS, the P refers to permitted, and the S means that there are supplemental regulations, those that I just went over. So, ADUs as proposed would be permitted in the R3, C2, and C4 districts, and they would be allowed by conditional use permit only in the R1, R2, CR, C1, and SPD20 and SED80 districts. Certainly, we can discuss the rationale there, but generally, along the oceanfront and along the west side neighborhoods, we certainly have concerns about unintended consequences, and that's the reason why we proposed a conditional use permit. and that's the reason why we proposed a conditional use permit in those cases. So they would not be allowed necessarily without unchecked review. And between the highways, districts generally, they would be allowed by right. Of course, in both cases, they would need to meet the standards. In the case of the conditional use permit, they would need to go through a discretionary review process. Planning board, as well as this board, determine whether or not they met the standards, but also whether they meet the findings for a conditional use permit. So again, I'm happy to go through any parts of the ordinance, as well as any discussion points that came up in the memo.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Zener?
Mr. Zener, do you have, so the public knows exactly where each one of these zones are, do you have something that you can reference that to?
Sure. I can, let me pull up a... So this is the town zoning map, and I'm sure this is not the easiest to read right now, but bear with me one second. So R1 and R2, you're going to be dealing with the light, off-white, and the tan. R1 and R2 are the zoning districts, are two of the zoning districts where ADUs would only be allowed with a conditional use permit. R3, it's permitted by right, and that's the orangish district that you see here between the highways generally. CR, C1, allowed with a conditional use permit only. CR is going to be blue, so along the oceanfront. And then C1 is currently unmapped. That's a district that's been discussed in terms of the location of it hypothetically in the future through a rezoning. C2 would be allowed permitted, so that's red, again, generally between the highways. C4 also permitted, that's the darker red, almost burgundy, and that's generally in this area here. And then SPD20 and SED80 are going to be the shades of green that are going to be all on the west side only. So it's important to also point out that the R2 district incorporates west-side neighborhoods, but also the entirety of South Nags Head. And so that it does present a little bit of an anomaly in terms of the character of those areas, but I think it does generally hold true that we've tried to make oceanfront lots, as well as west-side lots, conditional use permit only.
Again, other questions?
You need to continue.
Mr. Fuller?
May I ask a question of the attorney?
Yes.
Just for procedural purposes, all this was advertised for a September 3rd meeting, and my question is, this was supposed to be a special meeting for the review of the manager, and my question to you is, because it was advertised seven days out, should this be classified as a regular meeting?
The answer is yes. This is actually a regular meeting, and the reason is that General Statute 160A-81 provides that any scheduled public hearing is continued until the next regular council meeting without further advertisement when the board fails to have a quorum attending a regularly scheduled meeting. So that's what happened with respect to the board's last regularly scheduled meeting. Today's meeting, since notice of this meeting was given at least seven days in advance on the town's official calendar, it actually constitutes a regular meeting for purposes of the open meetings laws. And so that means that this meeting is the next regular meeting, and so all the public hearings have been properly advertised for today's meeting.
And this leads into the second question. Because the public hearing is a time-specific, advertised as that's time-specific, are we properly having this public hearing now?
Yes.
You understand my question?
I do. It rolls over to today's meeting without regard to the actual specific timing. It's just that notice has been given that it will be heard at today's meeting.
Right. I just wanted to get that in the record, Mayor.
Okay.
The attorney advised that we are properly meeting and properly doing this as we should be.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Mr. Walters?
I have a question that occurred to me that goes to the definition. And it's the 30 days or greater provision advertised or actually used. So we've broadly permitted short-term rentals in the town. And I guess my question would be, if you're in a short-term rental program and you've set your length of stay to 30 days or greater, is that permitted without this ordinance?
Yes. Because you can't, so this is a use, whereas short-term rental is almost-
It's also a use.
A use, but almost an operation as well. Because a short-term rental, you either have a whole house or a partial house. You would never have a situation where you're renting an accessory dwelling unit. And we don't regulate, generally, a short-term rental is less than 30 days. So if you had a short-term rental that you were renting for greater than 30 days, I don't believe that you would have to register that as a short-term rental. And I have heard of people that rent through a short-term rental platform, almost as though they were renting a long-term occupancy house or apartment. But technically, under this ordinance, you could not use the accessory dwelling unit as a conventional short-term rental. You could, however, create an accessory dwelling unit, and the principal unit you could rent as a short-term rental.
Okay.
You just could not rent the accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental. But no, there would be no violation today without this ordinance of someone renting a short-term rental whole house or a portion of a house for greater than 30 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we have time later to ask specifics about things that you want to add.
No, no, no. I think what we should probably do is circle back with our questions.
Because I have a number.
Yeah, and I have some more too, but I'm not going to ask them now.
Does the board have any more questions for Mr. Zener before we move on?
I will a later date.
Later date or later moment in this hearing?
Later time, not date.
Okay. All right. Does the board wish to receive any other information from planning staff before we move on? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, any members of the public who wish to comment on this proposed text amendment may do so. Again, if you'll please approach the podium, start by telling us who you are and where you live, and then address your comments to the board.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, good morning. My name is Doug Langford. I live at 224 Cuddy Sark Lane in North Ridge Estates. I am opposed to this zoning change before us today. Single-family homes and homes with attached ADUs are just not compatible. One is a family home, and the other a residence with a 600-square-foot short-term rental attached, they just don't fit. And whether it is within the ordinance or not, it's going to be used as a short-term rental, I assure you. There will be increased ground coverage, the required parking, and also the ADU footprint and roof line. There are safety concerns. We have, in North Ridge, and it's not unique to the west-side communities, we have day and evening pedestrian traffic. It's currently a quiet subdivision, and the bikers, the walkers, the runners, and small children with their parents, hopefully, mostly, unless they drift out from the yard or something like that, are always, at all hours of the day, on some part of the streets within the subdivision. They demand slow speeds and watchful driving. Your permanent residents are aware of that. People that come in to work in the grocery stores or whatever business and would rent the ADUs, I don't think they have that same sense of responsibility. This is not their home. And of course, it demands slow speeds and watchful driving. Adjoining properties with an ADU next door, now this is an imposition on the neighbors because this add-on is noisy. It creates trash. It creates, because of its density and ground coverage, it adds to the stormwater problem with this increased density in areas that already have a problem with stormwater, the west side of Nags Head and the subdivisions in Nags Head. I realize you all have been working on that, and your successes have been recognized, but I haven't seen you in North Ridge yet. This zoning change is just not compatible with our west-side, single-family communities. This needs to be of the town that already have compatible development and zoning. Excuse me. This type of development needs to be in the areas of the town that already have compatible development and zoning. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Langford. All right. Next person who wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Susan Lee. My husband and I reside at 239 West Lookout Road in North Ridge. I want to start with a little history. In 1984, we decided we wanted to move to the Outer Banks. And we came down on a number of rainy days and rainy weekends because in our visits here, we found quite a few neighborhoods that they had boards over cinder blocks to get from their house to the street. So we rode every west-side neighborhood from Kitty Hawk to South Nags Head. And North Ridge was one of the few places that there was no flooding. We built our home 30 years ago this month, and my husband has managed and owned a business in Nags Head for 32 years now. We are opposed to ADUs on the west side for a number of reasons. One is, as Mr. Langford mentioned, it is a single-family neighborhood, although it has become less so. And it used to be, we would call the town and say we were concerned about some of the residencies where there were illegal apartments, and the town would come out, and they would look into it, and they would put a stop to some things. That doesn't occur anymore. The parking situation that was mentioned here, we have homes in our neighborhood where the whole front yard is a parking lot. There's anywhere from six to 11 cars every day. And as Mr. Langford mentioned, this is a safety issue. My main concern is stormwater management. Now, we didn't have a flooding problem in Dorian, but we had had no rain for some time. The Monday after Dorian, when we had, I think, seven inches, five to seven inches of rain in Nags Head, there are several lots on our street that had significant flooding. And the ditch in front of our neighborhood still has water in it. I'm really concerned about what is going to happen when we add density to these lots. I spoke with Mr. Ogburn several months back, through email, actually, about some of the flooding in the neighborhood, a particular house on our street where the septic system had had to be replaced, and it's a point of continuous flooding. And he mentioned to me that the town was looking at purchasing a lot in North Ridge and a lot in Nags Head Acres to help with stormwater. It did not occur in our neighborhood, though I know that in Nags Head Acres, a lot was purchased, and I believe a pumping station is up and operating at this point. Until the town can get a handle on the stormwater, I would hate to see this occur in our neighborhoods because, again, we continue to have this problem anytime we have heavy rain. I'm concerned with the septic systems, the parking. We currently have an RV in our neighborhood that people are living in, and I just don't see the town taking as active a role in enforcing things as they used to, and that's a big concern for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All right, next?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael Pfaff. My wife Susan and I moved here from Cleveland, Ohio, three years ago, retired and moved here. We had purchased our home in North Ridge. We live on West Lookout Road, 237 West Lookout Road in North Ridge, which happens to be an SPD 20. I have some concerns. Both my wife Susan and I are both vehemently opposed to this ADU proposal and urge you to vote against it. We purchased our home, we selected our home because we were confident that we would be able to live in a quiet, spacious environment with little traffic and ample privacy. We were particularly impressed with the way the development respected its adjacency to both Jockeys Ridge State Park and Nags Head Woods Preserve. We were appalled to learn that the town of Nags Head was considering allowing ADUs in our single-family development. I contacted the mayor, Commissioners, and Planning Director with my concerns on June 25th. I subsequently met with the Planning Director on June 27th to explain further why I believe that the ADUs are the wrong and inadequate solution to the shortage of affordable housing. Increased density, increased population density jeopardizes the environment. Septic tanks already stressed during frequent stormwater events can't handle additional capacity requirements. They create public safety issues. We have no public sidewalks in North Ridge. So we let our children and adults, we walk dogs, we ride bikes, we jog, we exercise, all in the street, all hours of the day. And numerous vehicles, trailers, RVs, and construction equipment parked in the street and on lawns barely allows room in some areas for a single car to pass. Thick vegetation and many trees in our development, which we like, create limited sightlines for drivers as they're driving through our neighborhood. for drivers as they're, as they're driving through our neighborhood. So, you know, the, the street could be filled with children playing and the cars coming around the curve. Neither the children nor the car, the driver of the car, can see what's going to happen. It's, it's, it's a matter of time before something really terrible happens, and ADUs are going to exacerbate that problem by, by adding more population density and more vehicles. I have no confidence in the town's willingness or ability to enforce the proposed ADU regulations. Current regulations are not adequately enforced. There are numerous homes in our neighborhood with makeshift apartments for multifamily occupancy. There are some homes with eight to 10 cars, trucks, trailers, parked in the street and on the lawns. There's at least one advertised Airbnb with owners residing in the downstairs unit. There's at least one occupied RV on my street. If the real purpose of this ADU plan is to provide affordable housing, it is misguided. There are alternatives to threat, to threatening the image of Nag's Head by destroying the character and appeal of some of its finest neighborhoods. I suggest that business leaders develop better strategies that enhance our appeal as both an outstanding tourist destination and a fine place to live. Finally, if the town decides to proceed with this plan, I strongly urge you to exclude SPD 20 from ADU eligibility. It is unique. If any area of the town needs protection from this misguided development, it's SPD 20. It was created to be special. Quoting directly from the Town Code, when they created the district, "SPD 20, Special Plan Development District, is created to permit development that is compatible with the environmentally sensitive nature of this unique coastal landforms contained in this district." The largest portion of this district contains Jockeys Ridge State Park, which has been designated by the State Coastal Resources Commission as a unique coastal geologic formation area of environmental concern and as a national natural landmark by the United States Department of the Interior. The northwestern portion of the district borders on Nag's Head Woods, a maritime forest. This SPD 20 district is characterized by unique topographical and vegetative features, including vegetated and unvegetated dunes, migrating sand dunes, as well as pine forests. Again, I urge you to, to vote against adoption, and if that's not possible, to exclude SPD 20 from consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfaff. Is there any other comment? Further comment? Yes, here we go.
Here I am again. I introduce myself as Barbara Gurley. My husband and I live at 3322 South Buccaneer Drive in North Ridge Estates in Nag's Head. And as I said, I'm here to ask the Board of Commissioners to vote no on the proposed amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. I've submitted to the Board my reasons for opposing this amendment, so I'm not going to list them again today. Actually, many of them or all of them have been mentioned already. But to summarize, my concerns are traffic, safety, drainage, noise, and the environment. Assuming that they could not be here, I also have letters from Deborah and Duane Shepherd, who live at 318 West Lookout Road in Nag's Head, and Matt Loker, who lives at 216 Windjammer Road in Nag's Head, both expressing their opposition to the ADU amendment. I do have copies of their comments, which have also been already forwarded to the Board and to the Planning Department. I will say that Mr. Loker is a certified Level III Building Inspector and someone who helped enforce the building code and zoning violations, and he believes that it would devalue our properties and that it would cause blight and disrepair in our residential neighborhoods. I believe that previous town board's focus was on preserving the environment and maintaining the residential, small-town feel that drew many of us to live here. I think Susan referred to that as well. My father-in-law, David Gurley, was, um, he intentionally went down to Nag's Head to stay away from the congestion, the noise, and Kitty Hawk and Kittleby Hills, and he was, along with Mr. Langford, one of the first four residents in North Ridge to build his home. We live there now. I feel, I've researched the issue in other parts of the state in North Carolina and in the country, and talking with neighbors, I just do not feel the ADU solution is the best solution to our housing shortage, for small business owners particularly. I feel that the Board is getting on an ADU bandwagon. It seems to be popular now, but proposing to cover every available space with tiny buildings occupied by temporary transient dwellers to the detriment of residents. But they benefit business owners for whom it'll cost nothing. In North Ridge Estates, we already have issues with property owners renting out their homes, some even leasing individual bedrooms to multiple people. One neighbor recently invested in a new fence between her property and a house owned by a local business for his employees to live in, just because she wanted to put some separation between her and the ever-changing renters. Another neighbor has expressed serious security concerns with the turnstile-like occupant turnover next door to him. That is not how or why North Ridge Estates and other West Side, single-family neighborhoods were developed. I ask that the Board not get on the bandwagon, but continue to preserve our town and protect our residents. I understand the Board is unable to consider homeowner association bylaws when drafting town ordinances, which means we must depend on your concern and your attention to the impact of your decisions on permanent residential homeowners. And I ask that you please vote no to this amendment, or at the very least, exclude the SPD 20 neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gurley. Does anyone else wish to comment on this proposed ordinance? Any further public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Joe Mayon, and I moved here 25 years ago to open my business. And I purchased property in North Ridge and been there for 24 years. I've recently built a house in South Ridge, and we moved there in May. I don't understand, well, I do understand what the purpose of this is, is because of housing. And I don't know if it's to maximize the return on rental units. I'd like to say a quote from President Reagan. The most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm here from the government to help you." Okay? It doesn't always work out that way. Most of these people here are from North Ridge, and I can understand what they're talking about. I was president of the Association for like four years, like Mr. Gurley was also, and basically ran up against a lot of things that they already brought up. And one of the things was, if this ordinance is to put ADUs in the backyard for single-family houses, which they are in North Ridge and in South Ridge, to put a certain amount in the houses to make them a duplex, in case the Board didn't know, these duplexes already exist in these single-family houses, and I know that for a fact, having lived in North Ridge. And they brought that up. And when I moved out there, there was four of them that I know of, right in my general vicinity. And it's like, it's hard to, when I was the president of the Association, I dealt, dealt with this, with Wayne Gray and other members of the Board at that time. And, and basically, the ordinance is read that you, you know, more than five unrelated people was not allowed. If you didn't have a second stove in the house, it was not allowed. None of these things were enforceable. There's a lot of ordinances on the books that, the SCOP laws, it's just, you're just there, but they're not enforced. It's impossible. Who's going to be the bedroom police? Nobody wants to be the bedroom police, and, and that's what was basically said. And, you know, and the thing is, if you're saying about, people say, "Well, I can't live on the beach, you know, I want to work on the beach, I can't live on the beach, it's too expensive." Well, if you, if you can't live on the beach, then that means you can't live on the beach. I'm originally from New Jersey, and, you know, every day, 400,000 people commute from New Jersey to Manhattan. I hate to use that analogy, but people commute. I know people that live, not in Nag's Head, but in Columbia, that commute here. So, saying that you have to live on the beach to work on the beach isn't, to me, doesn't make sense at all. And, and the other thing is, if the Board and the town was interested in having dormitories or something like that, the town went in with the, with their county to purchase the, the event center over there. They purchased Doughty Park, Whalebone Park, and they have Barnet Street Park back there, Barnet Street Park. They could have put up the dormitory units back there, out of the way, or whatever. I don't think the town wants to be a landlord. And basically, you know, go through the experience with Brithaven, what happened there? A big mess. So, they could have turned Brithaven into dormitories if they wanted to be the landlord. But I don't think the town wants to be the bedroom police. You know, these ADUs are saying, one parking space and how many people, short-term, whatever. Who's going to monitor that? You know, when I was in North Ridge, we had an incident where there was a, a house, this is many years, 10 years ago, eight years ago, there were like 21 cars there. And it wasn't on, on Windjammer, where I lived, it was on, I believe it was Cuddy Star. And it was a nightmare. They were hot bedding, it was like three shifts that, that stayed at this house. And it took the town all summer long to get them out of there. They had to finally turn the water off to get them out of there. So, I mean, so if you get a short-term rental and you're having a problem with just overloading, by the time you get them out of there, the summer's over. I think this is a private sector issue. These people that bring these, you know, I had problems getting help when I opened up my business, and it's been the same all the way through. But everybody managed to get through the summer, and it works out. It's not some better than others. But basically, I think that, you know, when these people come in, the foreigners, they, they weren't here when I first came, and then they, they came a few years later, which was good, I guess, because local people wanted to work, didn't want to work, whatever the deal was. But basically, what they do is they sign a contract to come here for a certain amount of time, and these companies or organizations that bring them over here rent houses to put them in. So, the houses are there for them to rent. So, why do we need to put additional housing for people that are being supplied with the houses? I'm, not, not everybody falls in that category, but the lion's share does. So, I'm against this because, you know, I don't know if it's going to happen, if it's going to be in my subdivision or North Ridge, and like, like was said, the water issues, the stormwater, the septic, the setbacks, it's like, there's so many things that the town want another headache. You let the genie out of the bottle, you're never going to get them back in there. And how much density do you want? It's like, okay, the rental companies want to make more money on their rental units. But you know what? These aren't the people that elected our Commissioners and Mayor. They don't live here. They're, they get the check every month and they're happy, whatever it is. So, do you want to appease them? Put it on the ballot then, if you want to do it the right way. Not that you pass an ordinance and say, "Okay, now everybody's got it." Hey, when I bought my two properties, it was single-family units. If you live, if you live by an airport, I'll give you an analogy. If you live by an airport and you move by there, you expect to hear noise from the airplanes. And as a matter of fact, where I lived in New Jersey, we lived near Mercer County Airport. It's where I got my private pilot's license. And basically, we never complained about the jets going over, the airplanes going over. But in this case, when I bought my property, that was my fault if I was going to complain about the noise. But if I buy property and says, "Single-family house," and now the town's saying, "Well, now it's not single-family anymore, it's a duplex, or it's got an ADU in the backyard." That's not what I signed up for. You're, you're the ones that are going to pull the rug out from under me. I, I know what I bought into, but you're trying to sell me different bill of goods. I think this is a no-no. This is not good for anybody. So, and I'll leave you with one last quote from Ronald Reagan, and it was, "Government is not the solution to the problem, government is the problem." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayon. All right, any further comment? Anybody else wish to comment to the Board?
Mr. Ture.
Yes, sir.
I had a text from a citizen. Is it okay if I summarize his text at this time?
You may, yes. Be a part of the record.
I received a text from Bob Mower, and he apologizes for not being here. He had an emergency situation. He just wanted to make sure that I reiterated information that he has passed on to both the Planning Board and to this Board against his opposition to what's in front of us. He lives in Nag's Head Cove, resident of Nag's Head Cove. That was one. The second part is, and this is more technical, but he suggests that we get limits outside of the definition section, which generally, we don't use the definition section to provide controlling elements, and he said that's in there. And then surprisingly, the third thing he said is that, in his opinion, it will not be enforced by the time, which seems to be a reoccurring thing that I think is something that needs to be talked about at another time because if we're not enforcing current ordinances now, we need to have a further discussion about that, not with just accessory dwelling units, but with this. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, does anybody else care to comment on the ordinance? Yes, ma'am.
I did not intend to speak today, but I'm unique in, I live at 3429 Buccaneer Drive, and I don't live there permanently. I have a house in Dover, Delaware. And I come down here maybe three, four, five times a year. When my husband and built, when my husband and I built the house in 1992, they were all single-dwelling units. There were no renters, no nothing. And we felt safe. We felt the house was safe. We could leave and come back and find things the way they were. In the past couple of years, that has not been the case. I've had my trash can commandeered for other people's trash, and I'd have to go out and find it and bring it back to my house. I called the city, there was, the city of Nag's Head, Public Works, and they said, "Well, if you can't find it, you're going to have to buy another trash can." I've had trouble with renters in my area. They would commandeer my parking area. I have a rather large driveway that leads into the house. And we got there, I had to park the car behind theirs, they couldn't get out. So, when he got home from their, whatever they were doing, he got very belligerent because we parked him in, and we called the police. So, this is just occurrences happening when I go down, and sometimes I don't arrive till late at night, but it is a six-hour drive from Dover to Nag's Head. I would like to continue having a house there, but I no longer have my husband, he passed away, and it's just me and my dogs. And I just let you know that I'm opposed to this because of the incidents that I've had with the neighbors around me. And I got three houses that I know of that are right next to me, that are, that are like condos, you know? They got five, six cars in the driveway, they, they're in and out all night. It's, the house that I have is built really solid, so I don't hear a lot of it at night, but the dog barks every time anything goes on. So, I just want to let you know that I am opposed to this. And since I don't live here, I really don't have too much to say about it, except I do have property and I do pay taxes. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, could we have your name for the record?
Mary Nyman.
Okay, thank you.
I also sent my concerns to Cliff Hall's husband.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comment? Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Any comment from the planning board or anybody else? All right, now, does the board wish to receive information or have questions, further questions for staff? If so, this would be an appropriate time to get that.
I think we do have a discussion.
All right, would you like Mr. Zener to come back up?
I think so.
All right.
We have my new question.
Well, just first question, and it would involve the police chief as well as the planning director.
Okay. Chief.
And just so you know, we're in a fact-finding process. I'm not saying what my position is. If you want me to, I can tell you that right now, but I think everybody knows what that is. Under conditional uses, for those that need conditional uses, one of the conditional uses you proposed was as it related to noise. Okay? My experience has always been that conditional uses are to prohibit or prevent pulsate impacts. One of yours is that the accessory dwelling unit will not result in excess noise, traffic, or parking. Okay? That's the conditional use you're proposing. So I'm assuming if we adopt this, then that would prioritize with the police chief and his police officers, that if somebody calls about excess noise, that that would become a priority one action of the police chief, and they would drop necessarily what they were doing and immediately respond to something like this.
No, sir.
If not, then tell me how that section, which you don't have, you got, it's the How do you expect to do that on the front end as a conditional use? Or how do you expect the police to respond to that in a timely manner? Because my history is, noise tends to be a priority three or priority four, or maybe no priority at all.
Yes, sir. So this is not intended to supersede the town's noise ordinance. Those would be enforced regardless of whether or not there was a conditional use permit for a property or not. 7.3.10 indicates that before granting a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling in districts where, where applicable, the Board of Commissioners shall make the following affirmative findings. So these three sub-points, including 7.3.10.2, would be at the discretion of this board, planning board, in making a recommendation. On any unique particular application, do you feel like the proposed conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling would result in excessive noise, traffic, or parking congestion? So it's a finding for this board to determine in any unique application, not an additional condition imposed upon an ADU that's granted a permit. So I don't believe that it would have any additional responsibilities placed on the police department beyond what they currently have under the noise ordinance.
Can you tell me how we do that before it happens?
Again, it's this board's discretion, the way this is written. And if the board is uncomfortable with making a determination whether or not any particular application is going to result in excessive noise, traffic, or parking congestion, I think we put this in here because those are the concerns that we heard from the public, heard from members of the board, members of the planning board, that they were concerned that ADUs are innately resulting in noise, traffic, and parking. So that anytime an application as a conditional use permit is applied for, you can determine whether, because of that ADU being proposed, it's automatically going to result in excessive noise. You can either deny the conditional use permit, or you can impose additional conditions to mitigate those assumed impacts.
So our finding would be that if you put an accessory dwelling unit in, that there would be no traffic increase?
Well, you would presumably find positively, if you're intending to grant a conditional use permit, that yes, in this particular case, this ADU, in our opinion, will not result in excessive noise or excessive traffic or excessive parking, you could find that it might, in any of those cases, and impose additional conditions to mitigate those concerns. The intent of a conditional use permit, in my opinion, is to allow for uses where it's not, where you're not able to understand what the outcomes or what the impacts are going to be. So you allow for this discretionary process to review each of those cases on their own merits and unique conditions to determine whether or not, in this location, it's appropriate, in these circumstances, it's appropriate, whereas over here, it's not. And in this case, again, we thought that we were hearing that people were concerned that ADUs are inherently more noisy because of the occupants or the residents or the use of them, or that there's more traffic, we heard that today, or that there's more parking issues. And so on each of these, you can determine whether or not those conditions do or don't exist, and whether or not additional conditions should be imposed to mitigate those impacts.
And Mr. Fuller, if I may, put a finer point on it than that. In order to grant a conditional use in those zoning districts where this is permissible only as a conditional use, the board would have to conduct a quasi-judicial proceeding and would have to make findings based on competent and material evidence to the effect that those facts are found in order to grant the CUP. And if you couldn't make that finding, then the permit could not be granted.
I accept that. I would like for somebody to give me a specific set of criteria ahead of time that says, "What's excessive noise? What's excessive traffic? And what is parking congestion?" Because I've already heard those are already issues in those neighborhoods. So if I see them already in those neighborhoods as existing, I can only assume that anything else that's added would just further exasperate the situation. I mean, is that enough?
I would say this, you're sort of asking a hypothetical, but I think the kind of public comment that you've received today, in the context of a quasi-judicial hearing where the same commenters were placed under oath and provided sworn testimony to those kinds of concerns and impacts, would probably be sufficient to give you all a basis to find that, in fact, there would be excessive noise or traffic congestion created by such a situation.
So we're asking these people to come back each and, if we adopt this, we're asking them to come back each and every time there's an application.
Well, you'd need to have some kind of evidence one way or the other, and that would be an opportunity that members of the public, adjoining landowners, and so forth would have in that process.
Can I perhaps give a hypothetical that may help clarify this? So the way I perhaps see this, so let's assume you have an application where the proposed ADU meets all of the other standards. Let's say it's a detached ADU, that they have, you know, a patio or a deck, and the patio or the deck is close to an adjacent property owner. And people have concerns, this board, the public, that people are going to be congregating on that deck or on that patio in close proximity to an abutting property. In that case, perhaps you have concerns that because of the physical development of that, perhaps it will have excessive noise. Perhaps that merits a denial. Perhaps that merits a condition that they rearrange or reorient where that area is. That could be, just hypothetical, that could be one example.
Okay. Just one further question, just as a practical matter, not trying to get into hypothetical, but it's with the chief. If there is, after the fact, some excessive noise ordinance and it's nighttime, let's just say between 10:00 and 2:00, where on the priority list of your response would a noise ordinance be if there's activities going on in the summer?
Well, I think overall, you know, we have to triage calls nightly as far as their importance in our response. But certainly, if that call went out, that there was excessive noise at that location, we would respond as we normally do, and we would address the issue through either education or warning or citing the property owner.
What percent of the time do you get a noise complaint that you get there that the noise complaint is still going on?
It'd be hard for me to give you an exact percentage, but...
Would you say less than 50%?
It happens. It would be just very hard to give a percentage, Commissioner.
I would say it's less than 50% from my experience.
Yes, sir, because a lot, I mean, a lot of times...
And it's usually not even a noise complaint by the time police arrive.
Right. Sometimes they'll rectify it themselves, or especially if the, if the neighbors get involved and speak with them, sometimes they'll, you know, go ahead and mitigate it themselves. But, and there's oftentimes, we get there and it's, the party's still full on.
Thank you. And I'll just go on and pass. I've got a number of things, but I'll bring it up when we discuss the highlights.
Questions?
I really don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. I will, I'm going to go through everybody else first.
Question for the attorney. Does that, would you rather have that now or later?
No, that's fine.
John, we talked about people coming forward and making complaints during a, giving testimony during a conditional use hearing. If we grant conditional uses at one street in the neighborhood and not on another street in the neighborhood, what is our liability in court if challenged?
Well, the, each, see, each conditional use application has to be judged on its own merits. And I can easily foresee situations where you receive different degrees or different types of evidence from one application to another. Just speaking hypothetically, you might be more likely to get public participation and opposition from a Northridge application than you would from one in the Cove or someplace else. But having said that, the only concern that I would see from a legal standpoint would be the extent to which the board would be accused of being arbitrary and capricious in the application of standards. If the same evidence was, same type of evidence, same degree of evidence was presented in one situation, and a CUP was granted, and was presented in a separate situation, and the conditional use permit was denied, I think that's where the potential for problems would arise. And again, I don't know why that would happen, but that's where I think there's a potential for the board's actions to be considered, not just unsupported by evidence, but arbitrary and capricious.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Months ago, Commissioner Fuller asked us, well, asked the staff, what was the true goal for ADUs and the development of that? Have we, have you received an answer to that, Commissioner Fuller, that you're satisfied with?
I've received answers I'm not satisfied with. I mean, yes, staff has answered, I'm not personally satisfied with the answer.
Tell us the goal of the ADU.
Sure. So basically, summarizing policies that are in the Conference of Plan, I believe the goals are to allow for expanded and alternative housing options. The intent, as I see it, is that it allows for additional units in our traditional single-family areas, single-family neighborhoods, in a way that is hopefully unobtrusive, that it's not a significant increase in density. You're not able to build a larger dwelling or a larger structure than you can build under the existing ordinances. You're basically allowed to build the same square footage, but perhaps carve it up and create a separate unit. Hopefully, again, that that allows for additional dwelling units to be created that perhaps are more affordable. We have, again, under the definition, define that use as 30 days or greater to hopefully allow for more long-term occupancy options within town. I would say it's not a silver bullet if the town is concerned about more affordable housing opportunities, given what we've seen locally in terms of communities that have allowed for accessory dwelling units, if not nationally. This is not, in my opinion, going to create a number of units, a significant number of units, that will address the problem singularly. I think if the town and the board are interested in pursuing other options or addressing affordable housing, they're going to need to look at other options. But this perhaps gives housing options that don't currently exist.
So when looking at this, I know that it was mentioned by the board that we would like you to expand that and look at all options for this. What other options were approached by the staff in maybe a different manner than just sticking straight at ADUs for this?
So I don't, we've not, we looked at this in terms of expanding it in the zoning districts. I would tell you that we've not come up with any specific alternatives yet. I think it would be premature to do that. I think what I've discussed with the planning board, discussed with staff, is we need to really do an assessment of existing housing conditions. The planning board even talked about at their last meeting a need for looking at income and pay as part of that, really assessing the economy of the area to determine what type of housing needs exist in terms of the people that are working here and living here and looking for homes here, and then figuring out what are our existing conditions. And I think you really need to do that before we determine what our unique, specific goals are for providing for more affordable housing. I think, again, it would be premature for me to tell you what I think some of the solutions are. It really has to be supported by the community, supported by the board, because those are going to be the only solutions that are successful. I think if people are not on board, if people are not supportive of the solutions that we all agree on, or that are agreed upon, then they're not going to be successful in the end. But I think there's other options here. And I know, you know, we are going to be looking at, what can the town do for its own workforce, certainly the lifeguards? And I think there's some opportunities for partnership to do that.
So do you think we're premature on pushing ADUs as an issue for this at this particular point?
I don't believe so. I think it's been talked about for over a year now. There was certainly a memo that was put forward last year, last summer, from the business representatives in the community, a business committee. It was certainly supported by other organizations in our area. It's something that I know was discussed with the focus committee, working on both the Conference of Plan, but also the zoning ordinance, or the UDO, rather. And we've been talking about it in front of this board and the planning board, I think, since March or if not April. So, you know, there's certainly been an opportunity for public comment on it. I think what we've presented to you, what's been recommended by the planning board, where we allow for both byright and conditional use permit, the conditional use permit is intended to address unforeseen issues. And certainly, if this board doesn't want to include it within certain zoning districts over others, I think that's perfectly reasonable to do. But I think we've not heard people say that it's inappropriate everywhere in town. So perhaps the board finds it more appropriate in some locations and not appropriate in others. And I think that's a reasonable outcome.
Ms. Githen?
Not a question, but if my recollection serves me correctly, that when we first started talking about this, it was east of 158, not west of 158. And it got expanded. So that's the concern I have.
Yes, I think you recall correctly, and I think the direction from this board to staff was for staff to make a recommendation. And I think, you know, ultimately, I think there is some merit to allowing them in Westside neighborhoods with a conditional use permit process. So there's discretion in those unique circumstances and those unique cases. Because I, you know, I think there does need to be opportunities for people to reside in long-term residential neighborhoods. I think that's where you see success in these programs, is that you have ADUs that are part of a community and part of the character of the neighborhood, and they are not at least pushed to one area or another. I think it's, you see them successfully done in areas where they can be incorporated within to an existing neighborhood, an existing house. And again, if the board does not see fit, if there's a preference not to include them within certain zoning districts, I think that's completely reasonable to see how that works.
Other questions for Mr. Zener?
Yes. I know this issue has come before virtually every community on the Outer Banks. I didn't bring the chart with me. How many other municipalities and county have approved ADUs?
So let me refer to the memo. So, let me refer to the memo. So currently, Dare County allows them Duck, Kitty Hawk, and Manio. As far as I'm aware, Keel Devil Hills does not currently allow for ADUs. And they are all currently allow attached versus, and detached. Only Duck limits them to, excuse me, only Duck does not limit them to 50 percent of the dwelling. Dare County allows them to be up to 1,200 square feet. Manio, 600 square feet, which is what we're proposing. So I won't go through this list entirely, but these are the communities that currently allow for them. And we did reach out to all of them, and I think we at least outlined some anecdotes that we heard back from them in terms of the number of units that are being created. It seems like Manio, who's, I believe, of the towns has had it the longest, has seen the most success. But they also have more, it seems, subdivision activity than other communities where they can create these as part of new housing units. Duck and Kitty Hawk, they are seeing one or two of these created a year perhaps at this time.
Do we have a total number?
I don't offhand that, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
But can we say in Manio that most of that's because they're on sewer, most of it's in a downtown situation, and most of it's in a newer development in Cypress Cove?
Yeah, I would say that's fair to say.
So it's all PUD systems?
I would say that's fair to say. And, you know, we've seen that the sewer versus septic being certainly a restriction, especially in Kitty Hawk, on the number that are being created.
Yes, ma'am?
One follow-up to that. But based on any size home you built, or any addition you would add to your home, whether it was accessory dwelling or not, everything's controlled by the sewer anyway, the septic?
Correct.
And Laka Ridge?
Because we've heard about a number of issues, flooding, parking, wastewater. Just so that this is really clear, I hope that this set of questions is clarifying. So I wanted to use a theoretical example in a Westside neighborhood. And I live on the West Side, I live in Naxet Acres, lived there for about 30 years. And I'm concerned about if we don't pass this ordinance, you know, the perception that somehow other issues are resolved in any way because we didn't take the step of adopting accessory dwelling units. All these other issues need to be addressed in these communities. But, so I have my house. If I decide to expand the footprint with a bedroom suite, assuming I can expand my wastewater system and get a permit, and I can add a parking space for adding a bedroom, I can do that under the current regulations.
Correct.
I can rent that or any part of the house as a short-term rental.
Correct.
Which means, and I can rent that unit, there's no control. So I can rent that or any other part of my house exhaustively. So it's occupied by different people all summer long.
Correct.
And understand that I'm generating traffic and trash and all of that. So if it didn't have one already, this suite that I built, if I add cooking facilities to that unit?
That would not be allowed.
Okay, that's the trigger at which point it becomes a dwelling unit and thereby an accessory dwelling unit, attached, detached, or what?
Yeah, that is true. I think there are circumstances where you could add a kitchenette, where you would be operating it in violation of current ordinances. And we find that that is the case on occasion. But yes, I would say that adding of the kitchen, the creation of a separate kitchen would be an obvious violation.
Okay, let's leave the kitchen out then and say that it's the same unit. It's a bedroom suite with bathroom. And previously, I described it as attached to the house, but now I detach it from the house if I have no other accessory units. I still have to add the parking space for it. I still have to upgrade the wastewater for it. And let's say I keep it within the setbacks of the primary structure.
That would be allowed.
That would be allowed under the current ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. But in order to do even that in a reduced setback, it would need to become an accessory unit under this ordinance.
Correct.
You mean, in order to put a kitchen in it, it would have to be an accessory dwelling unit? Because he just said you could put a bedroom above your garage and you're fine. With the septic and setbacks and-
That was my understanding, that it was, you were talking about the distinction between what you can do currently and what would trigger under the new ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. The addition of the kitchen in that detached unit would be precluded today, but be the trigger under this new ordinance.
And ma'am?
Yes.
That may be the trigger, but what we're talking here is use, not a physical structure. So the ordinance is based on a use, not a physical structure. So it's how it's being used?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I just want to understand that, you know, a lot of these problems that we have described in the neighborhoods are resulting from currently, I mean, they're all resulting from currently permitted uses.
Yeah, there, you know, there is a little bit of a catch-22 that someone could seek and be entitled to a permit today, that their operation of it would be a violation of the ordinance. We found at least two this past spring where the units were being advertised, multiple units in a house, two units in a house, where it was clear physically there was not separation between the units, and there was a kitchenette in one instead of a full kitchen. And it was our determination, and we advised the real estate company, that they, while they were not in violation in terms of the physical sense of the unit, their intended occupancy would have been a violation under the ordinance. And, you know, we do hear about, I think, anecdotal violations. Without knowing specific concerns, it's difficult for us to enforce against those. The RV that was mentioned earlier, our code enforcement officer did investigate that, had multiple conversations with the property owner, the owner of the RV. And he was confident, after initially issuing a notice of violation, he was confident that they were not in violation of any of our ordinances. But I'm happy to look into that again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Zener? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I moved here in 1983, and since I've been here, there are a number of illegal duplexes within the town, in every, in every neighborhood. Do you have any idea how many there are within the town?
No, ma'am.
Most of us know where they are, we know, we know they exist, but there's never been a public outcry to do away with those because they are, they are our friends and neighbors living in those, you know, illegal duplexes.
I mean, the difficulty is, is that, you know, the only instance of a violation that we hear is that they have an illegal duplex. And that the ramifications of that, the concerns we don't necessarily hear about in terms of noise, trash, parking. We do in some instances, no doubt. But for the number that we hear about, without any specifics in terms of location, we don't necessarily hear about those external impacts. But nonetheless, we feel like that's a reasonable thing, and that's why we recommend looking at those in terms of a conditional use permit.
May I have one follow-up before? So if we approve the ADU ordinance, would those, all of those illegal duplexes, would they become conforming or illegal?
No.
They would still be illegal?
Some might be illegal, some might be legal, but most of them would still need a building permit to officially convert under the building code because there's fire separation requirements. And I think that's important for everyone to understand. Hopefully, if this were to be adopted, people would see that they have an avenue to remedy violations that they would not continue to maintain, perhaps on safe conditions, that they would seek a building permit, properly provide for fire separation between units, because they now have an avenue to legally do what they had wanted to do for however many years.
Commissioner Fuller?
May I take acceptance of what I just heard? Because I do know in the 2005, 2010 range, there was a huge public outcry about illegal duplexes. And the town did take numerous actions against individuals that had illegal duplexes, to the extent that walls were torn out, downstairs enclosures were torn out, a number of court cases were brought by the town against individual owners. I don't think the town lost one of those court cases. So there have been numerous activities in the past, and not that distant past, where there were huge outcries about illegal duplexes.
I apologize.
Further questions for Mr. Zener? Anybody else? Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding this proposed ordinance before you begin your deliberations? From anybody at all? All right, anything further, Mr. Zener?
No, sir.
All right, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the board may begin its deliberations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sir?
Start.
You start on that one.
Okay, we'll start with Whip.
And are we gonna go straight down?
That's what I usually do.
Okay, it's like, I just want to know the process.
Okay.
I guess the very first thing I would say is that when I ran for office, I walked around and did a lot of walking around, knocking on doors. Some of the people I saw, some of the people I did not see. One of the things I immediately learned when I went particularly on the West Side was everybody chose their neighborhood, and it's been reinforced here today, but everybody chose their neighborhood for particular reasons. They chose to live where they live because that's where they wanted to live. And they did not choose their neighborhood because they wanted to see the town double the density in those neighborhoods. Double the density in terms of housing, double the density in terms of people. So that was my first exposure to what people in those Westside neighborhoods wanted, which I'm one of. I also live in SPD 20, if anybody knows. I chose to live in that neighborhood for the exact same reason that some people expressed here today, was because of the openness, the open space, the wording that's in the SPD 20. And I just find it ironic that we're using the SPD 20, SED 80, as being the places we want accessory dwelling units because, quote, "we have enough property where we can put that." I mean, it's just ironic to me that we would identify the place that we chose not to have density, that we want to double it. I don't get it. There was no proposal that came forth from any working group that suggested West Side whatsoever. There was no direction from this board to have West Side. The only direction, I mean, we had working group after working group, planning board meetings, and it wasn't until a meeting where the board asked staff to bring us something back, that West Side neighborhoods were included. I still, to this day, don't understand, after having a lot of public input and discussion, and no direction to include West Side neighborhoods, that they would even come before us. I don't get it. The next thing I would say is for the land use plan, and I appreciate what the planning director said, but I think there was a lot of cherry picking of the language in the land use plan to support what was being proposed. I believe I could go through the land use plan and find as many reasons not to have these things in the West Side neighborhood. It's just a matter of which ones you want to choose to look at, and which matter the ones you choose that you don't want to look at. And I think that that is, to me, a sort of a disturbing thing because we weren't presented with those statements in the land use plan that opposed this sort of thing. We only presented those things that supported this sort of thing. That being said, the next thing is, I guess I'd like for Michelle to show a quick video, so you can bring it up, but I want to say, and this is something that's in my neighborhood, and it'll show House A. Well, you can bring it up, just don't start it.
Okay.
But it'll show House A, Garage B, and House B. So what you'll see is just a house. And then the next picture will be a garage that's associated with the second house. Now, it's a garage, but that garage could be an accessory dwelling unit. Now, okay. Do what? It was working before the meeting. Okay, now, this is the first house, and you can see the first house. The garage right next to it has no association with this house. So now just do the, now do the video. Okay, so you see a house on the left, then you see a garage that could be an ADU. And then this is the house that owns the garage. Now, if you pan back, the reason the garage was put next to the house over here is because the owner of House B didn't want all the noise and impact from that workshop garage next to the house. So they put it next door to the neighbor. And these things are fraught in SPD 20. You can have this, and you can pan again, just so everybody can get the full effect. Not, not, not pan like that. I mean, it's gotta go slow. But you can get the full effect of, if you have detached accessory dwelling units, you can get a second dwelling unit that has all the impacts on the neighbor and none on the principal structure. And I think that's very important in SPD 20, and I hope everybody understands that that is what can happen and probably would happen in detached. I've even had a neighbor of mine come, and that's exactly what they want to do. Not only do they want to do that, they want to live in the accessory dwelling unit, except for the summer. I mean, during the, in the winter. They want to rent their big house out in the summer, live in the accessory dwelling unit, then rent out the accessory dwelling unit anyway, it goes on. So with that in mind, not that I'm in favor of anything on the West Side that would be anywhere close to accessory dwelling units, I would like, if this thing goes further, is that as a conditional use, I would like to say that a detached accessory dwelling unit as a condition could not be any closer to the setback line than it is closer to the original dwelling unit. The point being, my biggest concern about the accessory dwelling unit is the off-site impacts. And if you can limit the impact to inside the original dwelling- to inside the original dwelling unit, I have a lot less concern. But once it spills over onto my neighbor's property, I have huge concerns. I do not want to have a situation where people are having to put up with somebody else's stuff. Um, I guess, one thing I, you know, one thing, things like this kind of bother me, but, you know, we had a business committee that said something about they wanted more housing. Well, you know, I'm very pro-business, but the business committee doesn't live in our neighborhoods. And the people that live in the neighborhoods need to be protected by us. They need to have their expectations met of why they are there. And I'm just very much opposed to anything on the west side. I'd be more than willing to discuss stuff on the east side, but that's to start a new conversation. It's not to say, oh, let's just kick this out. And one of the things that I find just interesting is, why was the west side of the village left out? I mean, it, it, there's a lot of things that just bother me. Do I want them on the west side of the village? No. But staff chose to leave the west side of the village out. I have no reason why to not. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. If you can allow them on the west side, allow them on the west side. I don't think that's right, and I'm glad for the village, but it doesn't seem to make sense to me why you pick and choose certain neighborhoods and not all neighborhoods. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I think it's because of their planned urban development.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm saying, I was going to say, in response to that, I think it's because it's a putt. It's planned urban development with their own set of codes, but be that as it may. I, I've heard everybody here speak today, and I think there seems to be some misconception, at least in my mind, about the purpose of accessory dwellings. Um, it is not an end-all for workforce housing or affordable housing. I think there are a multitude of scenarios where an accessory dwelling is actually beneficial to families and communities. I happen to live in the same street and neighborhood as Commissioner Fuller. Everybody here has been to my home essentially, except for John, probably. Um, we all know where each other lives, because we're, you know, we're a small town. In my neighborhood, we have, people's situations change over time, particularly as they age. We have one, one neighbor who, in their later life, they, their son moved back home with a, with a child, and they had no choice but to care for that child. They needed a place for them to live. They had a business over a garage, so they converted that to an apartment. Well, those children have grown and gone now, so now there's an empty apartment. So that's now been converted to VRBO with a, an elaborate tunnel, enclosed tunnel, from the garage to the house. There's also some rentals that go on to workforce housing within the house. All of that, I don't think any of that is illegal. There are others who have had businesses that it was their primary business that was a part of their home. That's now been converted to VRBO, because they're of retirement age, but they need the income. I think that's true of a lot of people in our community. I personally, if we hadn't bought our home in 1983, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure we could afford to live here. We've been very fortunate. Um, we have the villas at the end of our street, which is, I mean, that's, it's partly year-round, but it's also transient. People come and go. We have rental homes in our neighborhood that also people come and go. We've had rental homes back in Nagseth Woods that were weekly rentals, and SPD 80, where people would come and go. It doesn't, it's not the case today. I'm not sure that my neighbors having an accessory dwelling, whether it's for a family member or for a weekly rental, has impacted me negatively one iota. I've not seen an increase in traffic, there's adequate parking, and there's no conditional use enforced at this point in time. But I do believe, the way the ordinance is written, it can accommodate many of those concerns, even the concern about the, the garage and the, and the video you just showed. I happen to own two lots, as does Mr. Fuller. He has a, his home, and then he has a, a dwelling with a pool. I have a home, and then on my other lot, I have a garage with an apartment upstairs. This ordinance will not affect me. Let me, let me get that right up front. My garage apartment is over 700 square feet. It's a bedroom, a living room, a kitchen, stack washer dryer. Our vision was always, as we age, we will not be able to care for the home that we have. It's multi-level, it's, it's just too much. We have room in the front of that lot to build a four-bedroom home. We put in a five-bedroom septic tank when we built the garage, planning for the future. Um, we would never need a four-bedroom home, but we probably would need something on one level. And this has become, I'll probably get emotional. Um, this, it's become, I've become acutely aware of aging, because my husband recently had some C-spine surgery. So he's in a neck brace, can't ride in a car, he's improving, can't lift more than a pound, and then we've had a hurricane. He couldn't walk up steps. He, you know, there's a multitude of things he can't do. Now, he's going to recover. It's going to be long-term, but he's going to recover. I really don't want to leave Nagseth. My plan was to stay in this town. And I think there are many other people out there with similar situations, whether you've lost a spouse, and you need the added income of having an accessory dwelling, or someone to care for you in your old age. That was always our plan. I think we're focusing so much on workforce housing and affordable housing, because those are the buzzwords of the day in, in every community on the Outer Banks, because, I mean, everything is expensive. But if I could have someone live in my accessory dwelling, and maybe they're a young professional, they may be a teacher, they may be a nurse, radiologist, a legal assistant, I think there's some kind of, um, there seems to be a vision of undesirable people moving into your neighborhood. Well, that's totally in the control, pretty much, of the person who owns the ADU, and the way they treat it. And I think that putting it on, only on the east side, the people that own those homes are rarely here. But the people who live on the west side, we live here. We are able to watch over that ADU. We are able to watch, um, people that come and go. And if you already have the setbacks and the septic, and you meet all the criteria, it is really no different than adding on an extra bedroom, or two bedrooms, or whatever you want to do. And just because you have a five-bedroom home, doesn't mean you have five full bedrooms. I mean, there are two people in my three-bedroom home. You know, I'm not taking up extra capacity or, or anything, because my children are grown and gone. And it's, it's sort of an evolutionary thing, but I think we have an opportunity to look forward and create something that's compatible in all of the environments through the conditional, um, through the conditional use process. It's not for everybody, and ADU is not inexpensive. You can add on a room for less than you can build an ADU, a standalone ADU. You're talking in excess of $100,000 easily. Everybody's not going to plop one up in their yard. It's just not going to happen. And everybody doesn't have the available land to do it while meeting the parking, the septic, and the side and back and front yard setbacks. So I understand, I, I guess I understand the fear, but I think the not-in-my-backyard mentality is dangerous for any community, because we are all a community. And, I mean, we all know each other sitting in this room. Um, it would be me like saying, I don't, I don't trust you to do the right thing on anything. And that's just, that's just not the case. At least in my, in my view, it's not the case. Some extreme situations that were discussed today, if there's town ordinance action to be filed, please, please call and have those things addressed. I think some of those illegal duplexes that have been here for 30 years, the chances of those being addressed are pretty slim, but the chances are that you know most of the people that live in them, too. So, that's all.
Okay. I guess I start out maybe with a little bit different view of the, the issue. Having lived in Nagseth for 30 years, and built in Nagseth Acres, you know, before all of the streets were even, even paved. And I think Melanie and I were among the first, you know, dozen or so, 10, 12 to 20 folks to, to build in there. And I love that neighborhood. I told my wife, I'm only leaving feet first. That's the only way I'm leaving that house and that neighborhood. And I've seen the cha, town change around us. I've seen the shopping center across the highway that has put within reasonable walking distance of my neighborhood. You know, I have the, have the hardware store that was there for a while, but I can walk to grocery stores and coffee shops and restaurants. And it's just, it's, it's an ideal setting for, for me, and then into retirement. Um, but I, I can't ask other residents of the town of Nagseth not to do something that I'm will, not willing to do. And if I think that we need additional housing in any form throughout the community for those who work here, then, in my opinion, I have to be willing to accommodate them in my neighborhood as well. And it's not just people who work for the service industry who are, who are here just for the visitors. I mean, I need people to work. I, if I go to the coff, my favorite coffee shop, I need a barista. I need a, I need a server. If I call a landscape service, I need, I need them to have a full crew that they can send over. And, and if you talk to any business owner in the community, they'll tell you how difficult it is and how profound the, the difficulties are that begin with housing. And the business owners do live in those neighborhoods. I mean, I have a neighborhood, I'm a business owner, have been a business owner in Nagseth again for 30 years, and we have restaurant owners and other kinds of business owners around us who live in Nagseth Acres, and, and they describe how profound the, the issues are for them. And so, in my mind, physically, what might be used as a short-term rental and what might be used as an accessory dwelling unit are physically very similar. We're talking about differences of use between the two. In my mind, if, in fact, we intend these to be occupied for 30 days or more, that's a less noxious use than short-term rentals. That, I mean, you talk about short-term rentals who have high turnover and people coming into the neighborhoods who are not familiar with them, and we don't, we don't restrict that activity at this, at this point. Um, that if we had folks who lived in a neighborhood for a full season, were working in the community, then they become part of the community, and they become our, they become our neighbors. So I, I see them, I see them as fundamentally different. I realize that some of these things are going to get built, and they're going to be short-term rentals, you know, and it's, it's a policing problem, just like so many of these other issues. But I do think that we have the need. I do think that we can address that need in incremental steps. We don't have to, you know, if we, if we take a sort of a big swing at something, an apartment complex, or God knows what, we might get it wrong. This is a, this is an incremental change in our community. Um, and I see it as something that's necessary, something I should accept in my community, and something that I need personally as a, as a resident here, um, to make this, to, to maintain the viability of this community. Thank you.
My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
I've had a lot of comments on this issue. Pro, more from east of 158, against, more west of 158. We're all talking about affordable housing and buzzwords, and I see other governmental units looking at increasing density under the guise of affordable housing. What I haven't heard from anyone about affordable housing is if you want affordable housing, then put your money where your mouth is and tie it to deed restrictions for affordable housing. And I'm not talking about Section 8, I'm talking about deed restrictions that tie it to an income level and a workforce level. I haven't seen that out of anybody that is proposing workforce housing, which is making sure it's workforce housing. You can have 30-day rentals, you can have 60-day rentals. It can be tied to somebody that wants to rent your apartment for an entire season. That's what, what it can be. It doesn't necessarily mean it's workforce. Is there a workforce housing shortage? Absolutely. But I don't think this necessarily speaks to workforce housing. Um, I think people are right that they bought in neighborhoods. I mean, at one point, I bought a piece of property up on the west side in 158 to think about building a house, and I suddenly decided I didn't want a six-mile commute to work. I know that sounds silly, but I thought that was a long commute for me, after being able to walk to work. So I sold it. I know that's silly, given the commutes that many people have to work. But I understand people, as we talk about aging, if my family decides to sell, I'm going to have to move and find somewhere else to live, unless I get a lifetime right to it or something, but, but I do think about our long-term communities. I think there are ways for people to develop what they want to develop, thinking about long-term, whether it's one-story, whether it's patio, whatever it is. But I'm not comfortable at this point adding to an ADU on the west side in those neighborhoods.
Well, I knew those two down there were going to have the longest talk, so that's why I let them start. I, I think this is a much bigger issue than just use. I think with the increase in short-term rental, even though we're putting the restriction for 30 days, that's hard to enforce. I think that that has seen in our occupancy tax that we just received, you're going to start seeing that decrease each year. And that goes back to me talking earlier, when I got on this board, about the, my worries of our taxes having to increase to maintain our services because of the lack of taxes being paid by VRBO. That's an issue for me in this. And then putting it on a house that's, or a lot that's already restricted. There are restrictions in here, just like everything else with our, townhouses are restricted, that's the reason you don't see any in Nagseth, condos, apartments are restricted. This has a restriction on it as well, but you're also restricted now with anything larger than a three-bedroom, has to have a septic repair area. Anything that, um, once you increase the size, you can only do 30% lot coverage. There's very few places, SPD 20 being one, that, like Mr. Commissioner Fuller said, has the lot coverage in this area that can do any of these things. But I, I also agree with SPD 20 was set aside for that space, and it should have that space in there. Um, my feeling is that staff, although they brought us, they did what we set forth, it wasn't broad enough. It should have been looked at in a broader term. It should have looked at other sources of, of housing, not only ADUs for a specific intended 30-day housing situation, which Commissioner Walters and Mayor Kahoon brought up, but as well as, we all know that next person that buys it's probably going to use it for other, other reasons. So I think we need to look at it a lot deeper than just ADUs, and this is our solution to solve that immediate situation. Just like when Mayor Kahoon brought up that if he put a kitchen in his added bedroom suite, now it's illegal. But in that case, if you don't mind that person living underneath your roof, you're probably not going to rent it out to a short-term renter or somebody else. It's going to be a little more personable, and you're going to take a little better care of it. Whereas if they are, like Mr. Fuller said, on the other side of your lot, you really don't care who's out there, as long as they don't come to your front porch. So I just think it needs to be looked at a lot deeper. I don't necessarily agree that SPD 20, Nagseth Acres, the pond, I don't think there's a, a lot in my neighborhood in the Cove that lot in my neighborhood in Cove that you could even put one of these on. But I don't necessarily agree that that is the end-all solution, is just say, "Let's do it under conditional use," in that manner.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Of the attorney. Can you explain granny pods and the legislation that allows those?
Well, there's, there is special legis- not special legislation, there is legislation that the General Assembly adopted specifically allowing granny pods, which is a similar, it, it is an ADU. It's an ADU with some very specific limitations on it that, but it is an allowed accessory dwelling unit, which is allowed as a matter of right by statute.
And when the issue goes away, the granny pod goes away?
That's right. It's temporary.
So, it's, it's a temporary dwelling unit for a specific reason that goes away?
Right. That's correct.
Somebody passes.
Right. Exactly.
Which I don't know how you actually accomplish that under the building code. How you build something and then make it go away?
Well, be, be...
Strap it down.
Disallow the use, yeah.
Under the building code. Okay. Does the board need any more information? Heard from everybody. What's the, what's the will of the body?
Well, to get this started, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So, to approve the ordinance as written.
Is there a second to that? I'll second that for discussion. Let me ask a question, since this is on the table. Because there've been issues raised, you know, about this as part of a larger solution, about enforcement questions, about which neighborhoods are included and which neighborhoods are not included. And we have the motion on the table to approve it as it was brought forth by the planning board, which is that it's conditional in the, in those west-side neighborhoods. I just, I wonder if this, if there are any of those issues that need consideration.
I, I think that's outside the discussion of the motion on the table.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion on the table?
Would it be relevant to say that our planning director said if it's not supported, it's completely by the citizens of this community, then at that particular point, it won't work? Is that a good conversation for this discussion based on as it is written? They are not supportive of it in most of the west-side neighborhoods? That's the discussion that we've heard today, and we've had nobody for it. We had one letter for somebody in South Naggshead wishing they could be included, but that zoning is a little different than what the zoning is that we're talking about. And the way it's written, it's saying that it's conditional use. And me personally, I don't want to come in here every month with a new conditional use permit, asking for a PUD to be put, I mean, an ADU to be put on their property.
Hearing no questions or comment, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. Motion fails. I would suggest that we take a break at this point. I think that we are way past that point. We do have a couple of other public hearings ahead of us. It is 11:15. Let's take 10 minutes. The board is returned to order. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider text amendments related to multi-level deck platforms. Mr. Whitey?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the UDO that would pertain to multi-level deck platforms. Again, this is a matter in which the board sits as a legislative body. We'll begin the public hearing by receiving the staff's analysis presented by Deputy Planning Director Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As noted, this, I'm here before you to, to talk about a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. It's kind of weird saying that instead of the zoning ordinance, but I figured as we get started, the easiest way to do this is to go ahead and pull up on the screen what I'm talking about when, when we say multi-level deck platforms. So, essentially, this structure went up within the town in the 3,800 block of South Virginia Dare Trail over the summer. Once it was constructed, we began to get a lot of feedback about this type of structure, trying to decide if this was permissible via zoning and KAMA, that type of thing. And indeed, it is permissible. Something like this would, you know, attached could be considered part of a principal structure, or detached would be allowed as an accessory structure. In either case, meeting the setbacks and the lot coverage for zoning as well as the KAMA setback, it, it was permitted and could continue to be permitted. That in mind, we were hearing that there was a concern about the proliferation of these types of structures throughout the town, but most especially on the oceanfront. So, staff went to the planning board to discuss this type of structure, concerns that they had. They expressed several concerns. One was something like residential structure like this is not regulated by the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. So, to ensure that there was access, emergency access to this type of structure in the case of an emergency was a significant concern, as well as just the obscuring the view shed of the oceanfront. So, staff created two ordinance options, Option A and Option B for your consideration. Option A, which is in your package, it would allow for this type of structure within the residential zoning districts within the town, but attached only. It could not be a standalone structure, it could not be a detached structure. It would not be considered an accessory structure. It would have to be attached and as part of the principal structure. Where that would be allowed, we've noted that the deck platform should be subordinate in height and cumulative area to the principal structure. So, as you can see in, in this scenario, we do have, it is considered attached at this point. It does meet principal structure setbacks, it does meet lot coverage. It was not considered accessory. So, the language in the ordinance that specifically states accessory must be subordinate in height and area technically did not apply in this scenario because it's not an accessory structure. Moving forward, we would like to put those regulations in place to say that it would need to be subordinate in height and subordinate in area. The second option that was drafted was to prohibit these types of structures throughout the town in all zoning districts. And it was that option that the planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption Staff is in agreement with the planning board. Staff's recommendation is that of the planning board as well. We would support the prohibition of these types of structures throughout the town in all zoning districts, but would ask that if there is consideration to them to impose the, the conditions of subordinate, subordinate in height and area. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any, any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Curiosity question, Kelly. What's the height of this?
35 feet.
That's what I wanted to make sure that everybody understood.
And that's to the top of the railing or to the standing area?
Uh, to this railing here.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Ms. Wyatt, based on, and just clarify the, the meaning, what you're saying. So, if I had that, if I had a house and I wanted to put a multi-deck structure on it, attached to the house, the way so many are, are you saying if we ban that, that's not allowed anymore? To go a, a deck above the top floor level?
No, so I didn't get into the details of that. If you, hoping it's spelled out better in the definition, but any decking customarily found in conjunction with a residential structure, including sort of the widow's walk or something like that, that would occur above the home, so long as it is attached to the home, it would not be prohibited.
Look, if you can bring up that picture that I showed, Mendigo.
I'm not familiar. The video?
Yeah, just the, the first.
I don't think that deck, I don't think it showed the deck to that.
Can we bring the house up on the tax record? Is that, if that's easier?
What it's got, it's got a deck on top of the house. The question is, is that legal?
Yes, because it was attached.
If the, if the deck is attached...
Go, yeah, go to the left. See that? Behind the chimney is a deck that sits on top of the house. That's legal.
Correct.
It's attached.
That is legal.
And all it is, is just one deck that sits right on top of the house.
I would also clarify, in the definition, it does speak to the KAMA regulations, which I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with, but on the ocean, for the KAMA regulations, there is a ocean hazard setback area, and any decking built within that setback has to be structurally detached from the home. We have that all up and down the oceanfront. We did not intend, this definition, this regulation does not intend to restrict structurally detached, or as our building inspectors call it, cosmetically attached decking in the KAMA ocean hazard setback area. We do have that exclusion written into the definition so that this, this does not apply to your customary decking found in conjunction with any dwelling. It is specifically this type of detached structure.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anybody? All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed zoning, uh, UDO amendment? Does the board wish to receive any other information or have any other questions about this proposal? All right. If not, we will now conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the board may begin its deliberations.
Anybody want to start?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
I make a motion that we adopt Option B as presented.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt Option B, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Whitey, the next item on the agenda is public hearing number three.
Yes, sir. At this time, we'll begin the public hearing, which is also a public comment period to consider the DEQ hyphen DCM, Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Grant for Islington Street for construction of improved beach access to include a parking area, platform, and walk extension. Again, this is a matter in which the board sits as a legislative body, and this is really to receive public comment on this proposed project. And who will present the application? Ms. Holly? Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. The town has been asked to participate and submit a final application for the DCM public access funding. We are one of 14 local governments that have been invited back. Islington is an existing beach access. There is currently a beach walkover, but our proposal involves a parking lot as well as other improvements such as a shower, bike rack, lighting, signage, as well as stormwater management on the site. So, at the last meeting, the board did endorse the grant, and we requested a public hearing beheld today, but for the purposes of the grant, we will have to accept public comment, which we're going to do, but also re-endorse after the public comment period in order for it to count for the DCM's grant requirements. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does, any questions for Holly? All right. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, any member of the public who wishes to comment on this proposal is welcome to do so. If you'll please approach the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and address your comments regarding this to the Board of Commissioners. Anybody wish to comment? Mr. Mayor, there appears to be no one who wishes to provide public comment on this proposal, and so we will conclude the public comment and public hearing at this time.
Thank you. My understanding that a motion to approve this application would be a re-endorsement, so you don't have to use the word re-endorse. It would be a motion to approve the application. So, a motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the application. Any further discussion?
Haw.
Yes?
Is there a list of the items?
I'm sorry, I'm, I, a list of...
Maybe I, maybe I'm preceding myself. I thought we had already finished you and was on the second thing. Disposal of property.
No.
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
This is just, just to approve the Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Grant, which we have, that's okay.
I jumped in.
Motion and second. So, there's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item would be new business, and that would be committee reports. They ask board members if they have anything to report. Start with Commissioner Seale.
No, nothing to report.
Mr. Kahoon?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Walters?
Yeah.
Mr. Fuller?
Just, just briefly, I guess, as far as the tourist bureau is concerned, I do know that there's been direction given to staff to look at the acquisition of more property. I don't know where that stands. Our meeting is on Thursday, so I don't know where that stands. I also know that there was a letter mailed from the executive director of the tourist bureau to the manager about appointment to a working committee, and I'm not sure exactly where that stands with us or with me as the representative. So, I just want to make sure I bring that up to the board.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, that... Um, that letter was not placed on this agenda. Cliff, they requested a response from the town by Thursday?
Uh, I believe that's correct. Um, and it was my, my understanding that Commissioner Fuller would be, was already the town's representative to the tourist bureau and therefore would serve on this committee.
Okay.
And I'm not sure. I just don't know if the board needs to act or not. I said I would do it if need be. So, uh, the, I don't know. This, this letter's a little bit of a strange issue to me that, that we got the request in that form when we have a representative on that, on that, on that board. And... So I guess I would ask, does the, does the board have any will other than to leave it in the hands of our appointed representative to hear the voice at Nax Head? Um, do we, do we, are we served by an appointment to, um, the committee that the director of the, um, tourist bureau requested?
My opinion, no. I think we have a representative, um, but I still haven't seen the letter, so I'm not sure what it requests, but other than requesting staff to appoint somebody, but I don't think it's staff's role, since we have a, a member that's been appointed by this board and subsequently appointed by the county board to serve. It didn't say extra members. It just wanted staff, and I just think it's better for our representative to be.
I, I agree with you that it's not appropriate for us to put staff in that position. And if that was their intent, then I'd, clearly, clearly not. So if there's, if there's, uh, no objection, then I would suggest that the response be, Cliff, to the board, to the director, that, um, the town has a representative and, um, don't, don't believe that any appointment to this, um, committee is appropriate. The next item on the agenda are items referred to and presentations from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have is a request for a closed session to discuss a personnel matter and to preserve the attorney-client privilege at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Um, with the board's approval, we'll leave that closed session to the end. Uh, items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. The, the board will remember, a couple of months back, we brought before you the request to surplus some material, um, that we had that was left from the, uh, Ocean Outfall project that we did back in 2011. Um, Carolina Marine Structures requested some of that material to be able to use it on, uh, on the project that they're currently doing in McCall Court. Um, the, what staff's requesting is that it, it, right now, the surplus policy gives the manager the authority to surplus items below $5,000 to request in order to, um, this particular sale was somewhat time-sensitive. And we recognize that if we, if the threshold was increased to $30,000, which represents the amount that the general statute gives the authority to, that we could, we could forego a, a process that may streamline things and make it a little more, um, timely to dispose of these, these items. This rarely happens. Um, I, I'm not sure. That may be the first time that it's happened that I, there may have been others, but it's the most recent, obviously. So, and the finance officer can answer any questions or correct anything that I've said, but what we're requesting is that you change, that you allow us to change the policy for surplus policy to mirror the general statutes and, and, uh, increase the threshold from 5,000 to 30,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Board, any observation?
I should add that it doesn't, it, it still requires that we go through the process of, um, surplusing items accord, you know, the general statute lays that out pretty clear. How we can go about disposing of surplus property, um, it's, you still have to go through the, the notice. It's a 10-day notice, um, so.
Okay. All right. Board, any thoughts about whether to do this or if there's any reason not to approve this?
Yeah, I have any reason.
Mr. Seale?
Is there a state limit?
30,000.
30 is the state.
So the manager's request is to increase the limit, um, for surplus to $30,000. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Then also, um, I'd request that the board approve a resolution to waive building permit fees associated with Hurricane Dorian.
So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to waive the permit fees, building permit fees, associated with Hurricane Dorian. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I'll start with those listed. Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, some time ago, we adopted a resolution opposing some of the shrimping regulations that were being out there. They have since come back. Um, and as you all know, as a community, we try to push local seafood by local, and this particular resolution would infringe on a lot of the shrimping that goes on in our seance, and I would like the board to consider this resolution opposing the designation of special secondary nursery areas as it relates to the shrimping industry. And I'll answer any questions if possible.
Okay. Are there any questions for Commissioner Cahoon?
Not, I'll make a motion, um, supporting the resolution as presented.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion supporting the resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Um, next one is, um, as you know, every year, each town is authorized to apply for $10,000 from local government, uh, GOVEd channel, for lack of a better term. And, uh, this year, staff has requested, um, to apply for $10,000. One is to purchase a Mac Pro laptop, uh, which is the one that is, everybody's using now, and staff, it's compatible with everything that staff has with GOVEd. And the other is to spend the remainder of the funds for local videos, uh, bicycle safety, crosswalk safety, beach swimming safety, those type of things, as well as other, um, uses important to the town, multi-use paths, the history of the town.
Right.
The historic district, those type of things. So at this time, I'm requesting that the board consider granting the authorization to move this application forward to the GOVEd channel.
Okay. That was the form of a motion?
It was.
And is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I did, I gave you a weak aye. Sorry. Anything else, Commissioner Cahoon?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. No. All right. Commissioner Fuller, I know you have a couple of items.
Well, I have three.
Okay.
Okay. The, the very first one is to, I never undervalue the appreciation of safety as part of our job. It's always been a very important thing with Tonnan Ax Head, and I just want to compliment staff and, uh, town management for what they've done to work closely with OSHA. I mean, those things are more important than just getting a plaque at the beginning. I mean, it's a lot of hard work. The committee does a good job, and I think, you know, we appreciate it, but I want to appreciate it further. The, the second thing is, um, and this concerns, you know, and it's easy to play Monday morning quarterback with after hurricane, but one of my understandings is that the town and the mayor was operating under the auspices of a memorandum of understanding that was signed in 2015 by the mayor. And at that time, the mayor was Bob Edwards, not Mayor Cahoon. And that MOU authorized certain authorities be granted to the control group that are the purview of the Tonnan Ax Head, not the purview of the control group. And I requested a copy of that MOU, and then I've also requested a copy of the minutes that would authorize that MOU to be approved. And to the best of my knowledge, there is an MOU, but there's never an action that's been taken by the board that would have implemented that MOU. And I can say, this has happened once before, um, in the 2000s, when the county asked that the same thing be done, and only one town did it, and their board, um, talked to their mayor and said they weren't going to approve it. And so it wasn't done. So I, I would like either town staff or the town attorney to look into how that process was designed, or how it was designed, or what was done, and see what we need to do. At least the MOU has a clause in there that says, if the town doesn't agree with it, you can get out of it. But I would think the decision to authorize the control group to operate on behalf of the Tonnan Ax Head and do what we're supposed to do needs to be done by the, by, by this board, not by MOU that's just signed by the mayor without the knowledge of the commissioners that sit here.
Sounds like something we should ask the town attorney to look at.
I'd, I'd be happy to do that. In fact, I, I received a copy of that from Mr. Fuller earlier this morning. I've just not had a chance to review it or, or evaluate it.
And just for a little bit of background, when we were in the middle of the storm and there were questions about certain operations that were underway, I asked the town manager to find and send to me that memorandum of agreement so that I could read it for myself while I was in the, in the middle of this, and then in preparation for the retreat, if that was going to be a topic of discussion, to send that to the, to the board members, um, not being aware that there were any issues with such a memorandum. So I think we do need to get to the bottom of it. Cliff?
I, I wonder, just thinking about how this, um, the way we've operated, I think, under the assumption is that the control group, while what Commissioner Fuller points out, it talks about decisions, could we clarify or amend this to include the two decisions that we, that I have assumed were under the, that were the control groups to make? And that was when to evacuate and when to re-enter. That, that's the way we've operated. All the other things, uh, that, um, decisions that the control group may make are not theirs to make. And that, that's just in my mind, a clarification that needs to be made that's missing from this MOU that... And I just throw that out there as, for the attorney to consider how we might be able to address this issue.
And, and I can say, in the past, the control group had voted unanimously to recommend, um, evacuation, and at least one town chose not to. Even though they voted for it in the control group, they didn't do it, because they didn't think they needed to.
The main point that I think needs to be researched is the actions taken by this body to approve or not approve, which did not occur, to my knowledge.
Right. And, and that's fundamental to, to me at this point is, we need a, we need to know that we have a legally constituted agreement by which we're operating.
Correct.
So, that's the story there.
I was just going to ask a question. I know you haven't had time to review it yet, but can, once you review, can this board vote to rescind the current document and then create a legally binding, appropriate document that we all agree on and vote on?
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll give an opinion on that as well, but my impression on that is that the board, even if you approved this memorandum of agreement, it, uh, it gives you the right to get out of it as well. So if it's not been properly approved, then it shouldn't be binding in the first place. But even if you are somehow bound by it, you should be able to get out of it by taking action to do so.
And may I suggest that, um, there'd be communication immediately with the county, since they're the other party to this, that they're aware of the consequences and what we've asked the attorney, attorney to do.
It's all right. I'll bring it up at the manager's lunch tomorrow for discussion.
Please.
One final thing.
Yes, sorry.
Maybe, I, I did not have this earlier, but just the question about, there was a lot of discussion today about our enforcement efforts. And I'm not saying I think we need to do anything more, but I'm just laying out there to the board. Does what we heard today or anything cross to the level of we need to discuss enforcement actions?
Well, there's at least the perception in some part of the community that, um, that there are enforcement issues. And I think that we, we would be prudent for us to understand what the enforcement has and has not been, and the circumstances around that, and to have a further discussion about that, I do.
Because a, a thing like this, this morning brings out a certain value, and I think things can be used. I, I think the town has done a certain amount of enforcement. And I'm not sure it's exactly as much as we heard that we don't.
Right.
But, you know, I'd like to know how we're moving on enforcement.
The, uh, the planning director pointed out that he had, that we had recognized and taken action on each one of the complaints that you heard today. And we have a record of that, and I'll, I'll provide that, as well as the other enforcement actions that center around those same issues.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Walters?
Yes, um, and this, uh, this is largely a question for our attorney. We had a retreat this past Thursday with, um, what, 11 items on our agenda. And part of those, uh, part of the topics were communication among board members and communication among board members and staff. And, um, we had all the minutes from previous retreats. This board's been working together about 21 months now. So we, early on, established goals and values, and we reiterate those, and just make sure that we still share all those as, as we move along. And in our January 2018 retreat, we talked a lot about, um, our roles and responsibilities. We talked about conflicts of interest. We talked about ethics. Our, we had facilitators that helped us with that, and we had John Lighty, our attorney, there, to also help us with those discussions. And what we agreed to in January of 2018 regarding the mayor's role was, um, for him to be the spokesman for us, to get to know what we think, answer group emails and inquiries, to be our leader, be a good convener, make sure about info and other resources, allow commissioners to place items on the agenda, be an effective facilitator, be the mediator and the glue, keep us on track, stay focused for us, and be fair. And we all agreed to that. And, um, but what happened at our board retreat this Thursday, he is, he is, the mayor, regardless of whom it is, has been the spokesman for the board. So we speak with one voice, particularly regarding policy and ordinances, and everybody's not responding to multiple emails, because it can be conflicting and confusing. And that has worked well for us for at least, for eight years I've been on the board. Commissioner Fuller has taken exception with that now and, uh, told us he is opting out of that agreement, and that he is now going to respond as an individual and does not intend to copy us on emails, which is, um, a little bit concerning to me as a board member and on any board I've ever served, because it's important that we're all on the same page and have the same information, which was also brought up in the retreat. I just have concerns that how do we move forward as a board if we're not all communicating, if the mayor is speaking for four, not five? Or we, how do we resolve that as a board and move forward? That's a tough question. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, um, I've just never experienced this before, and I don't, um, I, I don't know.
Well, Mayor, pretend that's largely a policy issue. The, now traditionally, for most, any kind of local government body, the chair or mayor of that organization is viewed as the official spokesperson for the body, and often is implicitly authorized to speak on behalf of the public body, and oftentimes is given express authority at meetings to speak by issuing letters. It's not uncommon, in about every other meeting, the Board here will authorize the mayor to send a letter to a governmental agency expressing the views of the Board of Commissioners and the town as a whole regarding a particular issue. And so that's a common and inappropriate exercise. Where an individual member of the Board doesn't agree with those actions, they still have a right as an individual citizen to express a difference in opinion and their views. But as an official of the public body, I don't know that they have any authority to express anything other than their own views in that, in that kind of form. So I think that could result in confusion to the public, but I don't think there's any, any process to stop that, or to prevent that by Board action. The other thing I would say is that Boards, and I'm not, I haven't had a chance to check this here, but many Boards have a code of ethics, and that code of ethics often governs the behavior and actions and conduct of the Board members amongst themselves. And one of those things is typically authorizing the mayor to speak, to be the spokesperson and sole spokesperson for the public body. And when somebody does not comply with that, then I think they may be subject to some kind of censure or other commentary from the other members of the Board. Now, with respect to internal communications, where, I mean, obviously, each member of the Board of Commissioners is also a public citizen, has the right to try to communicate with members of the staff, while you don't have the authority to direct the actions of staff. In fact, only the town manager can do that, and only the body can direct the actions of the manager. It's not uncommon for individual, individual members of the, of a governing board to want to get information from the public body's staff at all different levels. But when, when actions are requested, such as, we need to develop this, or we need to propose an ordinance to cover this, or we need to engage in these enforcement actions, it's really not necessary, or appropriate, or effective for individual members to give those kinds of directions, or to seek to give those kinds of directions, because they may not be consistent with or reflective of what the whole body wants to be done with regard to those kinds of matters. Having said that, again, it becomes confusing for staff when you get what seems like direction from individual members of the Commission, as opposed to from actual official action, or just from the manager. And then the final thing I'll say is that there's nothing that prohibits individual members from seeking information from members of staff, doing it privately, doing it without copying others, doing it without, sharing that information with others. I do know of a number of Boards, particularly school Boards, where the practice is that anybody who requests information, any individual member of the body, who requests information from the superintendent, or from individual staff members, should understand that that information, when provided, is going to be provided to everybody, so everybody is fed from the same spoon. And I think that's fair. I don't know that that's necessary in all contexts, but I know that a lot of bodies feel that it's necessary to use that approach so that people don't feel left out, and that other people don't feel that they are somehow being excluded from the process, or blindsided by information that may be discussed at the meeting. And that's, again, something that can be dictated by the Board, or dictated by the manager, that anybody who responds, to make sure that they respond to the manager as well, so that he can make sure that that information is disseminated widely amongst the whole Board. Don't know if that answers any of the questions that you've raised, Mayor Protem, but I, but those are my immediate thoughts about that.
So based on what you just said, would it be advisable for this Board to take a look at our code of ethics and, I didn't look at that before I arrived, to look at that and see if there's something that we need to just clarify in there, so that we can function better as a Board?
I think that's, I think that would be a starting point, for everybody to review that, and see if there needs to be any changes or additions made to that, to address these kinds of issues or concerns, or whether that's something that has not been addressed at all. I'm just not sure without having a chance to look at it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Brings us to the mayor's agenda, and one of the things I need to let you all know is that I will not be here at the October meeting, I will be on vacation.
Have a good time.
Thank you. I will be on the North Carolina Cycle NC Mountains Coast Drive. So I'll be somewhere in the middle of that, riding from Blowing Rock to Atlantic Beach, and looking forward to that very much. I have, we purchased the official ride jersey, and I've contacted the mayors in all the overnight towns, so I can get them to sign my jersey. And I'm going to try to find the mayors in the day stop locations, see if I can get them to sign my jersey. I think that would be kind of a cool memento of that, of that trip. One of the things that I wanted to do was to commend our contractor, Great Lakes Dredge and Dock. They've already left town, they've presumably gone on to the next project. But among the, and I'll ask Cliff if I leave something out, but some of the things I wanted to say was that they were, they came in prepared for this job. They, it was not their first time here, so they knew what they were doing. The lines of communication seemed to be pretty good between them and staff, so that we could put updates out whenever there was a disruption in the process, or a beach access needed to be closed, or a pipe was leaking, and they had to go away for a while. They did a really good job with that. They got the project done on time. Did not ask us for change orders, did not, did some extra work, and did not ask us for change orders. And so I just wanted publicly to say how much we appreciated just their professionalism and doing a great job for us. I think we were well-served in this most recent storm, that we had that Goodwood Beach in place. And so that's all I wanted to say.
Mayor, you're right. Been a lot of comments about how relieved people were that the project was in place before Dorian came. Even though Dorian was not a direct hit necessarily on us, it did serve us well.
Yes, it did.
And they're very appreciative that the project got done.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I'd just add that, not only Great Lakes, but I think the town and the information that was given out this time was greatly appreciated by the industry and the tourists that came, and knew what was going on. So I think most people were well-informed, and it just, I don't think it could have gone any better at all levels.
Great, thank you. The last item that I have is Commissioner Cahoon and I, with the town manager, met with several representatives, pretty much a roomful of representatives of North Carolina DOT, to talk about the, talk about safety at the Little Bridge. And they had sent us, in response to a request that we made at an earlier meeting about looking into additional safety measures there, like signal, like the one that we have at Jockeys Ridge, or any other kind of enhancement like that, that they look at that. They did their traffic counts, their responses, I think we probably expected, was that they, there was nothing that they could or were going to do at the Little Bridge, in addition to what's there. And so we had some discussion about what is the safest kind of situation there that we could, we could create? And so we, I think as a Board, we need probably to have a little bit of discussion about what we would like to see there, up to and including removing the infrastructure that's there, so that the folks who are using the north side of the Little Bridge don't have any false sense of security, that there would not be, it's, it's, it seems to be either that what we have is what we have, or we eliminate everything that's there and leave the public on its own in regards. Is that accurate?
Accurate in some ways, as well as that the north side of the Little Bridge is not ADA-equipped, and that there's no, it's very much a step-down situation, which hides people from view.
So I think it might be appropriate for a Board action at a future time to put something on our agenda, to, probably a resolution that we would give to DOT as to what we think would be most appropriate to do there. And the suggestion from them is that we remove the infrastructure that's there and leave it. They would block, in that, if that were the situation, they would block the access on the north side. They can't remove the catwalk, but they would block the catwalk.
There's lots of things that we can't do. One of the things was taking the blinking yellow lights and making them red. You can't legally do that under whatever Federal Highway Administration Act it is, because anytime you have a red light, it has to be a
A full stop.
A full stop light. It can't just be something like that, that even I had suggested in the boardroom, not knowing federal highway law, but it can't happen that way. And the fact that there's no way, even, and I think we will as part of that, ask to have the speed limit lower too, at some point.
Yes, that's correct.
Which we have done that in this Board already. They had not gotten that resolution asking for that, so they were not prepared for that that day, perhaps. But I did read that we're not the only town to ask them to lower speed limits recently. Everyone, Atlantic Beach or Emerald Isle, one of those towns is asking, Atlantic Beach, I think. Oh yeah, on the causeway to Atlantic Beach, that's what it is, asking them to lower the speed limit as it comes off a bridge, much as ours does. But I think you're right, we're going to have to take some actions if we want to try to enhance the safety aspect of that area.
Is there any other business, Mr. Manager, before we get to the closed session? Right? So it is 12:15. My sense is that the closed session is going to be, require some time. So my suggestion is that we would take lunch before we return to closed session. And so is that the will of the Board? That seem to be reasonable?
That's up to the Board.
Some of us will need to get to work, but, and I'm including myself in that, but that's okay, that's okay, this needs to be done. So I would suggest then, it's 12:15, that we return here in an hour, at adequate time?
Okay.
All right, so the Board will, should we go ahead, should we go ahead and?
I'd suggest this. I'd suggest that you recess, that we reconvene, and then you go into closed session.
Okay.
You just may want to announce to the public that it's unlikely the Board's going to take any action following the closed session, whenever that happens.
And consider that, consider that announced, that the Board is likely to return only for the purpose of that closed session, and not to conduct any other business today. So the Board will be in recess for one hour. Okay, the Board has returned from its break, and the only thing left on our agenda is a closed session. So Mr. Leidy, will you give us the proper language, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The Board needs to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3 in order to confer with the town attorney regarding a matter within the attorney-client privilege, and to preserve that privilege, and General Statute 143-318.11a6 in order to discuss one or more confidential personnel matters.
Thank you. You've heard that? A motion would be in order?
Should I move?
With a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The Board will be in closed session.
Renee is on.
They're on.
Okay.
Okay. So the Board has returned from closed session. Mr. Leidy, will you report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The Board did discuss matters within the attorney-client privilege, as well as confidential personnel matters, but no actions were taken.
Thank you. Any other action to business to come before the Board?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second. Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Board adjourns.[1783.48]